Hi, everyone. This is the Auburn School Committee meeting for March 27th, 2024. Call this meeting to order. This is the Town of Auburn School Committee. It's being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open-meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of this meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely, posted on the agenda on the town's website. All are welcome to join us in person here at Five West Street. All supporting materials have been provided to members of this body and is available on the town's website, and the public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note, this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. We could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The vision of the Auburn Public Schools is to educate and prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. Our commitment: we will create, maintain, and support an environment that fosters a sense of belonging for all students in our schools, respecting race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, homelessness, poverty, spoken language, and ability.
All right, thank you, Dr. McCrillis. I will open it up for citizens' comments if there are any. I think you're going to scroll at the top.
Oh, okay.
All set. Okay. All righty, seeing none, we will move on to special recognitions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this evening, we're going to talk a little bit about the Science Olympiad team that competed in a state tournament on Saturday, March 2nd, at Wentworth University in Boston. Students had been preparing all year. They competed in the UMass meet and on Saturday, on that Saturday, participated in over 20 events with more than 60 high schools. Some of the events this year were micro-mission, forensics, disease detectives, Quiz Bowl, optics, chemistry lab, forestry, experimental design, wind power, mystery architecture, tower, Fermi questions, among others. The Science Olympiad competition results were announced, and out of 64 participating schools, several of our students finished in the top 25, and four students placed in the top 10. So if you will allow me, I'm going to read everyone's name here, and then we do have Ms. Barrios and Mary O'Brien here as well. So in the top 25, where Ren Horn and Braden Boris placed 25th in Fermi questions, that's my question about what's a Fermi question. Bryce and Mary O'Brien placed 25th in Write It, Do It. Gabe Sumner and Nathan Tran placed 24th in Optics. Ty Voe and Ren Horn placed 24th in Code Busters. Mary O'Brien and Braden Boris placed 23rd in Microbe Mission. Mary O'Brien and Bryce Aduquio placed 21 in Wind Power. Nathan Tran placed 20 in Astronomy. And in the top 10 were Zach Miola and Ren Horn placing 7th in Geological Mapping, and Mary O'Brien and Bryce placing 3rd in Mystery Architecture. Please join me in congratulating these scholars.
Amazing.
Done. So I don't know if you would come up to the podium and just talk maybe a little bit about what it was like? Barrios, you could come up too. Sounds like you had a good group of kids. So what was it? Well, first of all, what are Fermi questions? I guess we could start with that.
I know that wasn't your event.
Yeah, that wasn't my event.
So Fermi questions are big questions, scientific questions. For example, they're random, the students can't prepare for. They say, so how much water does a tree can hold? So they have to use their knowledge of different sciences, physics, et cetera, to come up with their best estimate of the answer for that question, for example.
Wow.
That's the type of questions they do, and they have a time limit. So all the 64 students, pairs, they're in pairs, they have the same time, you know, and answer the question, and then they listen to the next question, and they come up with a way to solve the problem.
Through the chair, can I ask, what's the time? What's the time limit?
It depends on the question and on the person who is running the event, depending on how difficult maybe to answer the question.
I'd need days.
No, I was very impressed. That's very impressive.
And how do you get to participate, I guess?
It is... Do you want to answer?
In like the club?
Yeah.
Okay. You can just join the club, like it's just a normal club in high school, and then you pick your events, and you go to the meet, and you just do your events. Well, obviously, you prepare for them, but...
We have at the beginning of the year, I think those are my students coming in.
Excellent.
Excellent. Perfect timing.
The students join at the beginning of the year. There's 20-plus events that they, and they join or pick the event that they are interested in based on their strengths. And some students pick them based on their weaknesses, so they want to learn about that topic. And it involves all of the sciences, STEM, math, building events, I don't know if you did building events, you did a building event, the wind power event, et cetera. And the year up until March, they have my classroom and our resources in the department to study for their event. They get two or three pieces of paper with all the information that they need to know, and all kinds of resources. Also, kudos to the science department because they are always available, the teachers are always available to whatever they need, so.
So tell us about one of the events, any one of you, if you'd like to speak, say, you know, give us your name, and then talk maybe about what you participated in and what you had to do.
How do you prepare?
Sure.
Go for it. Go close to the...
I'm Mary O'Brien. I did the wind power event. So there were two components to that. There was a written test, and I had to build a wind turbine out of like a CD. So you prepare for the written test, you just study about wind power, like it could be anything from like how to calculate how much, like, yeah, how to calculate how much energy is produced from the wind turbine to the history of wind turbines. And then I made a wind turbine, like I made one, and out of a CD, and, yeah. And then we had to test it, and, yeah, we just, there was like a fan, and you put it on a stand in front of the fan, and you just test it, like it will spin, and you'll figure out how much energy it produces.
Huh. That's amazing to do that.
I'm Jessica Saint Jean, and I've been in this club since freshman year, very dedicated. Probably one of my best experiences is back in freshman year when I was with Kiara Correpsa. We did an event called Science Bowl, which basically, it was all different forms of sciences, from chemistry to physics to biology. So she taught me like the basics in chemistry, which then excelled me for sophomore year when I actually took chemistry. And we ended up placing 11th out of 60 different teams. It was one of the best experiences I've ever had, and I'm still very close with Kiara, like to this day. You make, like, you make lifelong friendships too, like from studying all these different things to actually participating with them and coming up with all these different strategies. Like you have months to prepare from the beginning of school when you choose your events to all the way in April when you can actually display everything that you've learned. I feel like it's just a very fun way to show everything, and, yeah, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Would anyone else like to share anything they worked on or a topic that they were interested in?
Forestry guy.
Yes, as, my name is Zachary Miola.
Hi.
And as my colleagues have probably already told you, the Science Olympiad is full of a vast different array of events which are compatible to everyone's, like what they want to study. And it's a very, very inclusive group, and my event was forestry and geological mapping. And it was very, very fun, and I would say that it builds lots of community with one another. Yeah.
And was your assignment a writing assignment as well?
My assignment was test-taking. It was more of a test.
Okay.
How many questions did you have?
The geological mapping was, I would say, around the probable 50 mark, and the forestry, yeah, 50 questions, and the forestry was well over 100.
Wow. Wow. My God. Is that something you're interested in pursuing during high school, or just an interest now?
It's an interest now. I wouldn't consider pursuing it as a occupation, but is definitely a hobby of mine.
Excellent.
Great. Did anyone, any of you have to answer a Fermi question? And if so, what was the question? No, no one? Just curious.
No, we did not do Fermi questions.
Through the chair, how often did you guys meet?
Once a week, once a week on Tuesdays after school.
Love for science.
I love it, it's great.
And some of you have an interest in some kind of science after high school, right, Mary, you said? And any others? Excellent. Lots of scientists ahead of us.
Great, good for you guys, that's awesome.
Yeah, congratulations on that impressive wild win. Yeah, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Good job.
And if you would, if you could all come up, and as you're leaving, we could shake your hand and say thank you for coming, so.
And what was your name?
Julia.
Julia, congratulations. What was your name?
Thank you so much for coming tonight. Nicely done.
Congratulations.
Great job. Thank you for coming. Nicely done.
Number seven.
Thank you for coming. Nicely done.
Great job.
Thank you for coming. Nicely done up there.
Yeah, good job.
Thank you, Mary. Nice to see you. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming. Nicely done.
I'm very proud of you. I love your...
That was great. Awesome.
Thank you.
Is that your water bottle?
Oh, yeah, someone's.
Maria.
Maria, is that someone's bottle, water bottle?
One of the kids with the longer hair, the kid with the longer hair, brown shirt.
I think his name was Gabriel.
I don't remember his name.
Thinks it was Gabriel's.
Is that his name?
Thank you, Maria.
Yeah.
Oh, that's so great.
Right?
Yep.
These are things out there.
Yeah, it's amazing.
I wouldn't be able to do some of that.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Love it.
And they do it for fun, which is a great, great thing.
That's a...
The chair, I did ask Mary what she had to build for Mystery Architecture. She had, they got a wide variety of items, they had to build like a tower to keep a penny off the ground.
Oh.
So that's pretty impressive. Like, so she said there was spaghetti and there were some other things.
She placed 3rd.
Yeah.
Good for her.
Amazing.
All right, back to business. I will seek a motion to approve the minutes from March 13th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March 13th, 2024.
I'll second.
Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
There's a vote, and we do have a student rep here tonight, so I'll turn it over to you, Molly.
Hi, guys. So we had a lot of exciting things happen over the past two weeks. So first of all, the polar plunge that was actually held here at the middle school went amazing. Pictures are posted online at Special Olympics Massachusetts website, as well as we were featured on Spectrum News, so that was really exciting. I participated in the plunge, and it was very cold, but really worth it because the Massachusetts Special Olympics has raised over $17,000.
Wow, that's incredible.
So it went really well. And then also, last Saturday, the juniors put on a Disney breakfast, which went amazing. We had over 250 people at each session, we did two sessions, so 500 people were showing up. There was face painting, dancing, it was really fun, and the kids loved it.
That's great.
This week, sophomores also participated in ELA-Mcast. There's community March Madness brackets started, so each homeroom participates, and so far, Mrs. Barokas's homeroom is in first place, with Mr. Young's homeroom a close second, and this event goes on for multiple weeks with each homeroom competing. The National Honor Society also had their induction on March 14th. For new members, it went amazing, and congratulations to all inductees. And we also have a field trip coming up on April 12th to Kimball Farm with the group. Spring sports have also started up and are going well so far. Next week, many sports like track and tennis have their first matches and meets, as well as lacrosse and baseball already having skirmishes played. Boys hockey also got nominated for the Ice Runs Deep Hockey Team of the Year, and that voting can be online, so make sure you go vote for them.
Molly, can I just interrupt? So I posted that on our Facebook page today, so if anybody, just to put it out in the world there, if anybody wants to go and vote, the link is there.
Yeah. Also, the freshman math team had a great ending to their season today, ending their season this afternoon after a great year. And then lastly, junior seminar has started at the high school, and juniors are meeting with their counselors about the application processes. That's all. Thank you.
That's all.
Yeah, that's all.
Two weeks.
Thank you, that was great, very thorough report.
Yes. And when is it, isn't Mr. Auburn coming up, or did it already happen?
Yeah, it was last Friday.
Oh, yeah, that too.
Yeah, that happened too, all right.
It was Mr. Auburn, and there was also a surprise staff performance that evening as well. That was something. Did a very good job. Did a very good job.
Video was good.
I'll have to find this video then. It was pretty funny. It was pretty funny.
All right, Molly, well, thank you so much.
Thanks, Molly.
Thanks, Molly.
I love hearing spring sports are starting, and spring is coming, so.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Have a great night.
Yeah.
All right, we'll move on to unfinished business.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So several, two meetings ago, I guess we had started the process, my evaluation process for the committee. At the last meeting, I offered to answer any questions that were there, so I think perhaps just an update on where that stands and how we'll move forward.
Yeah, so I just was able to get the last couple here evaluations tonight, so I'll look those over and tally all the scores and everything, and for the next meeting, what's the date of the next meeting? We'll make sure we have those ready to present.
Yeah, the April 10th, yes.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm like 10, 11.
Yep.
All right, so April 10th, more to come.
Okay, thank you.
Work in progress. Okay, we'll move on to new business.
Yes, the next item is school choice enrollment for 2024, 2025. As you know, several meetings ago, the committee did vote to continue school choice at the middle school and high school, and now it's about determining the number of spaces or slots that we're going to open for next year. Applications will close on the 31st, right, Mandy? That closes on the 31st. So what I tried to show you, and that you do have an outline in your packet. So right now, our enrollment for 2023, 2024 is listed in that first column for each grade level. The number of students who are considered school choice within that enrollment is in column two, so you know how many we have at each grade. Those are not into, in addition, they're already included in that first column as For 2024, 2025, that's the third column, if we take our current students and move them up a grade, you'll see how they shift up. We have 20 students who will be leaving us this year as seniors. So if we kept just the students we have now for next year, that would leave us with a total of 57 students, if you can see in that third main column. If we add the students as I am recommending, which you'll see more like in the last column, the anticipated enrollment, we've moved up the total number of students, and then you'll see a column with recommending four students in grade six, nine in grade seven, and 15 in grade nine. The reason for the larger amount in grade nine is we actually have a pretty big class coming up to grade nine of 210 students that are currently in grade eight, but as happens each year, we get approximately 50 students who go to Bay Path in that year. So that's why you'll see I've listed 180 students, so I only took 30 off just to be safe. I didn't take the full 50 that we normally, that we normally might get, because we don't want to have school choice crowd out our students and really impact their learning environment, so I am recommending just 15. And so that would ultimately, if we added the four, the nine, and the 15, that would give us a total of 85 students for next school year in comparison to the 77 that we currently have, just spreading them out a little bit. These numbers were done in collaboration with Mr. Desto and Mr. DeLongchamp, so that they're well aware of, you know, this whole conversation that's happening tonight. I did not do it in isolation, and they feel like these are an appropriate number that they can easily manage in their school, still also considering the potential for registrations through the summer, which we don't know what we're going to get, but it does give us some flexibility. So, yes, I put that to the board if you have any questions or comments.
I think it's smart keeping the freshman numbers on the lower side because we do get some back from Bay Path that it doesn't work out, so.
Yeah.
We certainly don't want to overcrowd, like you mentioned.
Through the chair, when is the deadline for Bay Path, like that kids are accepted, or have they already been accepted, or is that still a rolling kind of...
They have, but even, so even in the case of Bay Path, some kids get accepted and they don't go, and then they hit their waiting list, so it's a bit of a process. So I know acceptance letters to Bay Path have gone out, but as far as whether or not that's finalized yet, I'm not sure, right, if people have committed.
Thank you.
Any more questions or comments?
School choice kids have always done us very well, they've been a great addition to our school system, so.
All right, I will seek a motion to approve...
Make that motion? To approve superintendent's proposal of accepting 13 school choice at Auburn Middle School for in grade six, nine in grade seven, and 15 school choice students at grade nine.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
There's a vote.
Thank you very much. The next item on your agenda is the overseas field trip approval. So Ms. Fridella and Mr. Creamer from the Foreign Language Department are presenting a potential plan for travel to Paris and Madrid, April 18th to 26th in 2025, with approximately 20 to 25 students. You were given some information from both of them in your packets, including the trip outline. They have graciously agreed to join us here this evening to answer any questions or maybe to talk about the trip, and then you can ask questions, whatever the committee chooses.
Okay, thank you. My name is Karen Fridella, and this is year 23 for me in the Auburn Public Schools. I'm a French teacher at the high school, and I'm joined by my colleague, Daniel Creamer, in year 25 at Auburn, and the Spanish teacher. So we come to you tonight to discuss our proposed trip and also to seek the committee's approval for that trip. We have both been lucky enough to receive the committee's approval several times over the years. For myself, I have taken seven groups to France, the first being in 2005, we went again in 2009, 2011, 2013, 2015, 2017, and 2019. And I was also lucky enough to gain your approval for the Quebec City trip that I ran for almost 20 years before handing it off to my gracious colleague, Elizabeth Dumay, who has taken our students post-COVID up to Quebec City for the last two years. Dan has had several experiences as well, taking some of our Auburn High students to Spain and Costa Rica, also with the school committee's approval. So what we're proposing would take place between April 18th and April 26th of 2025, and it would be a Paris-Madrid combination trip. Previously, we had run separate trips, France and Spain, but we thought it would be best for some of our students to explore two different settings and maybe help our numbers as well. If they were separate, typically, we would do alternate years, and we thought that just one trip might be a little bit better overall for our students. It would also give them and their families time to save, and what we've noticed, of course, is that the trip cost is high, and higher than previous years that we have run this trip. The company that we use, ACIS, which is out of Boston, they have several opportunities for our students. There are some scholarship and discount offers that the students can capitalize on, and there's also a monthly payment plan. So the way that the cost is broken down on the paperwork is that it would be around 450 a month debited, and that would get them to that price point. And also, the basics of the trip, they'd be going from Paris to Madrid and also having some side excursions as well. In Spain, they'd be going to Segovia, and for us in France, they'd be going to Versailles, they'd be, of course, they'd be up in the Eiffel Tower, seeing all the beautiful lights in the city of lights, as well as receiving a flamenco lesson in Madrid, so they'd all come back very fancy.
I was just going to ask you that. I thought that was going to be your forte.
Probably could, he probably could. Get him some castanets, right? Why not? Okay. So before we take any questions, we just wanted to note that per the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks, which were updated in 2021 for world languages, part of exploring the language is exploring the culture. So several of the standards include gaining cultural competence and understanding, developing insight into the nature of language and culture, and engaging responsibly and collaborating with people from other cultures. So that's what we have always aimed for with our foreign travel trips, and we think it's a great opportunity for our students to really engage in language that they've been studying for many, many years, dating back to their middle school years. So anything to add?
No.
All right, so if you have any questions for us?
Through the chair, can I ask, how many, is this open to all the students who take a language or a certain amount of years taking a language?
Anybody.
Anyone?
Yeah. Okay.
Usually sophomores can...
Sophomore. Got it. Yeah. Okay.
So I have a question and kind of a concern. Right now, France is on a heightened alert due to the terror attack in Russia. What happens, so I guess that's my concern, is a year from now, if you are in the same situation, what is the game plan?
Excellent question, and safety and security of our students is number one priority. I think we both have been overseas several times, and we know that our company that we work with is very, very much safety and security-driven, so they have several different checks and plans in place in the event that anything should happen if we were in country. If it would happen before, our students and their families can sign up for several different insurance and protection plans, so they could essentially protect their entire cost of their trip. Of course, it would be a little bit more expensive of a price tag if they purchase the insurance, but this did happen to Dan right before COVID began, so I don't know if you want to speak a little bit more.
Yeah, I mean, they changed, well, as far as I, what I understand, what ACIS now, they've changed pretty much everything because of COVID, which was the lead that April 2020.
Yeah, I remember that.
I don't remember that.
Is that Costa Rica? Was it the Costa Rica trip?
Yes.
The one where they were supposed to ride the horses.
They got, they were reimbursed, everybody was reimbursed, so, at the end, not initially. They had to change their, you know, how much they would reimburse, they kept going back and forth, and eventually they, but it's been, I've been using ACIS since 1990, and they've always come through, so.
I would add that that's probably why our price point is a little bit high because of that company, but we have both traveled with EF and other educational tour companies, and it is my opinion that you get what you pay for. So with ACIS, they just go above and beyond, and I think part of that is their insurance protection plan. I think it is completely trustworthy, as Dan's experience was with the COVID.
And through the chair, I see that there's a 24-hour emergency hotline, 24-hour tour managers, so it sounds like there's...
Constant.
Constant.
Even in the hotels, there are security guards walking the halls where our students are. They're very serious about safety and security.
And do you plan on, it's very expensive, as you mentioned, you plan on fundraising for the students interested?
Fundraising is tough for a trip like ours, only because we are not performative, like a music or a band trip. We are not putting on a French or Spanish play, so it feels as if we'd be crowdfunding for our own vacation, so it just feels a little off. There are opportunities through the company where students could... There are opportunities through the company where students could write an essay to earn scholarship and things like that. And in the past, for me, I have had students who have gone on the France trip, do their own personal fundraising. So I remember a student in the 2017 group who sold candy bars after mass at church and she made herself a little spending money, I think. So I think there are individual opportunities, but it is for us a little difficult to have people fundraise for us to visit the Eiffel Tower and things like that, that are more vacation. I know it's educational, but it feels a little different when we're not performing.
ACIS also has, in the past, the first kids who sign up, they get a discount. Also, I know that there's been, we did it by lottery, but there was two $500 scholarships through ACIS and, you know, we did a lottery and it took its cut, you know, things like that too. I think they still do that.
Yeah.
Through the chair, do you need a certain amount of students to be able to do the trip?
Yes. So typically for a chaperone, you have to have six students sign up. So Dan and I would obviously want to have 12 students to facilitate us being able to go. But I've gone with as few as seven and with as many as 25 on my own. And Dan's groups, I'm not sure you're least in the most.
I've brought, way back, Costa Rica, we went, it was just after 9/11. So we went with a small group and then I've gone with big groups also, 20 something kids to Costa Rica. I've been to Spain when I had the exchange program. We had probably, I don't know, 16, 17.
I see the deadline is December 1st of this year. So by then, would you know whether or not you have enough students to move forward?
Oh, yes. Yes. If we were to receive the committee's approval, we would have a meeting, a student interest meeting in the next couple of weeks to garner, to decide who might be interested, to see who might be interested. And then we would have a parent or guardian meeting after that to give all the information. And so the deadlines that we were given, that's mostly for insurance purposes too, for the company.
Okay. And through the chair, so this is the 5204 is the trip and then the protection plan, which is an additional three or $400, that is in addition. So it's more like 57, like if you did the top protection plan, you're looking at somewhere in the ballpark of 57. Okay.
Yes. Yep.
Yep. I mean, through the chair, I know it's expensive, but it's a nine-day trip, round trip flights.
Right.
That's multiple flights.
Yeah, it's not.
It looks like breakfast and dinner.
Yes.
Things like that.
Yep. Sometimes the, when the lunches aren't listed here as being included, it's because we're having a lesson, we're being taught by a French chef how to cook a pastry. So the students would cook for lunch and eat their lunch. So there are little snacks involved and you can eat cheaply in Paris or Madrid. I mean, you grab a baguette, have some cheese, sit on a blanket, wear your beret and there you go. So you can, you can eat, yeah. Same beret, but you can eat very, very cheaply. But we talk about that with students and parents and guardians about spending money. We talk about that sort of thing. We talk about, you know, what you need to buy for a souvenir versus maybe what you should think about for your, for your food budget, things like that. So.
Out of the gates, if you're a shopper, which I'm not, but it's out of the gates how much it tells people to bring to spend.
Right. And it's a good lesson in sort of saving and critical thinking. And so that's something that we work on. We meet quite often before the trip departs and we're talking about different, different things all the time. We have different themes for each meeting and we send that paperwork home to parents so they can also see what we've been discussing at the different meetings.
Okay. Did you have? I just had a question. So while the money is funneled through the company, like we don't deal with any money from the school district. So, and if a student decided that or a parent wanted to back out of, they would deal with the company on that respect?
Correct.
That would be, okay.
Correct. The only money that we might deal with personally is we prefer to take one vehicle to Logan Airport. So over the years, we have collected money to take a school bus or something to get all of the students and all of the luggage to Logan at the same time. It's a little too scary for us to try to show up at different times and all meet and maybe get caught in traffic and maybe miss the flight and it's stressful.
On my first trip that I ran, it was my cousin, they were coming, their luggage was in another car, they were here. It was, it was, I said after that, we're always going.
Right. So that's.
Touch and go.
That's, that's one instance. And we used to collect tip money for the tour guide and the bus drivers and country, but now that's actually included as part of the cost. The ACIS now takes care of the tipping, so that's part of that fee, the 5204 that was mentioned before.
Through the chair, any medical needs? What do you usually do for that?
So I've gone through several, several trainings with our nurses about EpiPens and that type of thing. Typically, being high school students with their medical needs, they know if they have to take medication, they know when that should be. It's up to the parents or guardians discretion if they want me to carry any medication. So I think over the years, we've had a few diabetics who have traveled with us and we just follow all the guidelines that the parents and our nursing staff sends us.
Great.
All right. So we don't have it on here to vote tonight.
Right.
Do you guys feel ready or do you want to think about this?
I feel ready if they want to have the meeting, I guess.
Yeah, just to get.
They can see how much.
Sooner the better.
I will say my only hang up is that it's not an equal opportunity.
Oh, you're good point.
You know, so.
That's right. It's true.
And we do have students that don't, could never come up with this kind of money. So that would be my only thing that I have to mull over a little bit, but it's a, it's a great trip. I think it looks awesome. I wish I could go.
That's, that's something that we struggle with too. We wish it were lower cost and more of our students at Auburn High School could go.
Yeah. I almost wish you guys could figure out a way to fundraise just for, you know, students that are really eager to go and can't, but.
Through the chair, I think the student in 2017 went to my church and came up and talked at church and I'm pretty sure my kids bought quite a few candy bars from them. I think they did make money that way.
So maybe, I guess in your meeting, throw those ideas out to the kids. Like it's not, you know, a definite no for you just because your family can't afford it. There are opportunities, there are ideas and stuff.
Right.
I don't know.
And the kids are the same when they see, we hand out the same information that you have when they see the price tag, their eyes are widening and they're wondering how they'd be able to come up with this. So part of us trying to get the early approval is that they'd have time maybe to earn some extra money over the summer or things like that, try to figure out their birthday holiday gift schedule.
Yeah.
Grammy and Grampy and everybody else, but agreed, I wish more of our students would be able to go.
Yeah. All right. So is there, if someone came to you and said, I just really can't afford it, is there a, I don't know, some encouragement or avenues or suggestions that you might provide to them to fundraise or no?
I guess the only thing that I could suggest if they are 16 or older would be to maybe get a job to, over the summer, to try to start raising some funds, selling the candy bars or those kinds of things maybe. And then via the company's website, trying to find those small areas where they could get, you know, write an essay or enter a lottery or things like that where it's possible.
Well, you seem to be cognizant of that, so.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, definitely. All right.
Ready to vote?
I'm ready.
Get the ball rolling?
In Spanish?
French?
It's been a while.
Are you all right with that or?
Yeah. I have the same concern. I don't want anybody to feel left out.
Right.
Particularly when it comes down to feeling left out about money.
Yeah.
Right? So that's a, that's hard, you know? And when we talk about being an equitable kind of place, it makes it hard. But on the same respect, you make great points about it being, you know, an amazing opportunity for kids.
Yes.
And with some experienced folks who will be great to guide them through all of that. So, yeah. And I will say, if you know of a couple of students who are trying to frontier their own little fundraising thing, we don't need names, but maybe throw us, you know, the information and we could contribute or help them out however we can. So, um, all right, I will seek a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the Paris and Madrid trip from April 18th to the 26th in 2025.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Good luck.
I also want to say thank you for doing it during a vacation week.
Yes.
Yeah. Great. Thank you very much.
And thank you for coming to present too.
Yes, we appreciate it.
Very much.
Nice to see you. I'm Cory checked.
Fight some of us for it.
Oh, see? There you go.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thanks, Karen.
Have a good night. Thank you for staying.
Have a good night.
All right. Also in your packet this evening, there's a notice from the Auburn Booster Club. They have graciously donated a total of $5,520 to the varsity boys and girls track and field teams. This money will be used to purchase gear for the athletes with any remaining money put towards an award banquet. And in the letter that came with some of the donation, you'll see there's a letter from Heidi Tatum, the athletic director. So $4,020 was given to the varsity boys and girls track and field teams. And then there was, there's another letter here that I went by.
$1,500.
And then a separate $1,500.
Wow, yeah.
So we just need your motion to accept.
Yeah, I'll seek that motion.
I'll make a motion to accept with gratitude the donation of $5,520 from the Auburn Booster Club to support new gear for the varsity boys and girls track and field teams.
I'll second.
Okay, are we also throwing in that other one?
It's all together.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's all together in that.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And thank you to those booster clubs.
Yeah, it's amazing.
Yes. That's all parent run and volunteer and everything.
Yep, great. The next item is just for information from our food service department. I didn't, I met with Ms. Pulver the other day and she talked about so many things going on that I asked her to just give me a list of things so that I could share them with you. So on March 5th, she organized a food show at Auburn High School where she had four school food vendors come in to highlight 12 different food options and the 72 students and 10 staff. And from what I understand, there was some lingering staff that were trying to get leftovers one thing from what she said. But what she did was, it was just to come in and say, what do you like? You know, these are some new options. What do you think? And these will be incorporated into the menu K to 12, but she thought that this process for her first time was best to happen at the high school with our older students. So you'll see some soba noodles and vegetable, lo mein with egg noodle, breadsticks with garlic, turkey patty, barbecued pizza and some other things. So some nice changes for the, for the food service process. She's also started a tower garden at the middle school with seedlings and they're going to be starting one at Swanson as well. But her big push this year has really been to go local with how she accesses some of the provisions. So you'll see she got maple syrup from a little farm in pure BS maple shack in Auburn, Little Lee Farm in Devons, she's using, Wellspring Harvest in Springfield, Joe Chahowski Farm in Hadley for carrots, potatoes and butternut squash, cheese from Winchenden, and she'll also be serving beef patties in May from Woodya Farm in Sutton. So I just think that's a tremendous effort on her part to bring these local vendors in and she's continuing to look for more. So that was exciting. And then in May, they'll, they'll, all kids will enjoy an all-local meal to kick off the summer vibes. So beef patties, cheese, lettuce, tomatoes, onions, french fries and assorted fruits and vegetables, all from Massachusetts.
It's great.
So you can't get any better than that. She also shared that in the month of February, the food service department had their highest participation based on average daily attendance with 71% of our kids participating in lunch and almost over 39% participating in breakfast. That's a huge number of meals. She gave me the number of meals. It was like thousands and thousands and thousands based on once you do the calculations with all the kids. So that was great. And she also had Congressman McGovern's office reach out and say they would like to highlight Auburn's school meals program at the Auburn Middle School. So when we have more information about that, we'll share it with you if you're able to come. But yeah, she's doing some great work. Her staff has, she has brought a lot of stability to the staffing. That can be a department that we've seen a lot of turnover and that has significantly diminished. She's just been a great leader as far as empowering some of the staff to kind of, you know, take their own leadership roles in the kitchens where they work. And as I think she mentioned the last time she was here, she's also facilitating some big upgrades at both Packard Chog and Bryn Mawr School with equipment from money that she has through the food service department. So that's going to be another great addition to the school. So I just, I just met with her as we were kind of working on the agenda. I'm like, just write that all down and I'll share it with the committee, but it was all good news, so.
Through the chair, she has lots and lots of energy.
She does. She does. She is very enthusiastic about what she does and you have to love that, right? When someone loves their job like that, so.
And also through the chair, she can bring in anything. They'll try.
I'll tell her that.
She has a little pad last.
Anytime.
Snacks.
Yeah, absolutely.
We'd like some snacks.
That's a good one. She should have thought of that.
Come on.
I mean, wonton noodles, something.
Yeah.
Yeah. They did not have that when I was in school.
No, I was able to volunteer over there during the holidays for their, being a lunch server and kudos to the group over there. They have it down. It is a well-oiled machine. They like their jobs. They're respectful. They're just, it's a good group, so.
It is. It is.
And through the chair, if I may, we had a professional development day on Friday and so Brienne and Ms. Querion in our ONCAR program had a speaker come in and talk to the cafeteria staff about students with varying needs and communication and the best way to approach them. So I thought that was a really strong program and she continues to think of everything.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great point.
Outside the box.
Yeah, they were very happy because, you know, there are some departments that tend to not get as much attention, I think sometimes, as they probably deserve. And I think food service has been one of those and she's bringing a really bright, positive spotlight to them and so that's exciting.
Through the chair, she was a great addition.
Yeah, she is.
Thankful.
Yeah. And that pure BS maple syrup, I know the owner, Bruce, and he gives so much to this town. It's great to see a little spotlight on him, so.
Excellent.
Yeah, it's all good stuff.
Great. All right, we will move on to the teaching and learning report, Mr. Keller.
All right, speaking of good vibes, so at the March 13th meeting, you may recall that I shared our draft version of the Student Opportunity Act Plan, which is something that's required by the Department of Education. All districts must submit a three-year Student Opportunity Act. So I sought your feedback that night. Dr. Chamberlain sought feedback through the larger community and each of the principals asked school councils for feedback on it. And so those have been incorporated into the act plan that you have in front of you. At the last meeting, Samantha, I believe you had asked about could we break up academic and social emotional? And so I did bring the book that is the guidance from the Department of Ed, so it is required to be. So I can show you proof, but ultimately it is, it is kind of a plug and play with certain, one of the, certain of these programs. So just to reiterate, we're looking at implementing three programs, a multi-tiered system of support that helps all students progress both academically and their social, emotional and behavioral development. Program two is to select and skillfully implement high-quality and engaging instructional materials that support culturally and linguistically sustaining practices and foster deeper learning. And then program three is to implement academic supports and interventions that provide all students, particularly students with disabilities and multilingual learners equitable access to deeper learning. We then have our supports in the community that we rely upon and that we have a positive working relationship with, and it was also mentioned at the last meeting to bring in youth sports, and so you can see that on the backside of the piece of paper, there's Auburn Recreation and Culture was integrated in here, and there were some other suggestions that were brought in from school councils. So that's our current form of the Student Opportunity Act, and so I would look for additional feedback if you have any, but ultimately, seek your approval.
All right, any questions or comments concerning?
All right, I'll seek a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-four Auburn Public Schools' two thousand and twenty-four Student Opportunity Act Plan as presented.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, yeah, it looks good.
Yeah, it looks good.
I feel like the programs fit our strategic plan perfectly.
It has just a lot of things that we're already doing, so. It is, it is a new document, but it is.
The same.
Yeah, right, we're much into the same tune.
Yep.
That's good.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Keller, for all you do. All right, Ms. Cecilia, we'll move on to you, the business and financial report.
Good evening, everyone. In your packet, I provided a year-to-date budget report dated March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, for your review, and along with that, as I normally do, the budget transfers, I provided a listing of budget transfers dated, dated March twenty-first as well, between the same series for your information and between different series for which I'm seeking your approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions with regards to those.
Okay, any questions?
Nope.
There's none here. I'll seek a motion to approve the list of transfers.
I'll make a motion to approve the list of transfers dated March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, as presented by the business manager.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And I've also, in your packet, I included a copy of the two thousand and twenty-three end-of-year audit report. I did, there were a few minor findings, but I'm hap, very happy to report that the necessary amendments have already been posted with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The audit also addressed issues pertaining to the chart of accounts, which will be brought back forward to the town accountant. I just wanted to provide, you know, the report to you first, and then I would pass it along, and the school department will continue to work in conjunction with the town to address these matters. There's certain kinds of ways that the chart of accounts need to be set up, and because our chart of accounts are so old, they were, they were prior to myself, and we've been using them, and we use Lake Crosswalks to make things work in the end-of-year report to do the reporting, but they're coming that they want things, you know, so we get noted on that, you know, a couple times already, so we're working with the town on that, it's just, it's a long process, so.